All set, ready? Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the February meeting of your Lewisville Town Council. It's been awhile since we've had this many people in our audience, so thank you all for coming out. It's always great to see faces and meet our residents and glad you took a little time out of your evening to take some interest in your town government, so thank you for being here. We'll start our meeting as customarily with our roll call.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ivan Huffman.
Happy Thursday evening. My name's Melissa Hunt.
I'm Mike Horn.
I'm Ken Sadler.
Evening, Jane Welch.
Good evening, Monty Long.
And we have our town manager and Amy, what is your last name, Amy?
Lanning.
Amy Lanning is our substitute attorney tonight, standing in for Elliot Fuss, who's on vacation. Okay, very good. Um, let's see, we have our public works director, our town planner, our town clerk, our town finance director, and with the thumbs up from the dark room, we have our communication specialist who's taking care of all of our broadcast duties tonight. So thanks, everybody, for being here. Um, we'll start this evening again with invocation led by council member Monty Long, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by council member Ken Sadler. If you're able, please stand and join us.
Ms. Perry, Heavenly Father, we thank you. We come before you this evening. We pray that you help give us guidance in the decisions that we make for our town that you have blessed us with. Father, thank you for all these people that are here to be part of this decision. Father, thank you so much for all that you do in your holy name, Lord Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. You know, you don't realize, I've had some surgery on my shoulder, and it's on my right hand. You don't realize how much you use your right hand for, but just then, the pledge of allegiance reminded me that I'm right-handed and not left-handed, so stay healthy, everybody. Alrighty. Ms. Manager, you have our consent agenda, please. Oh, so we gotta adopt the agenda this evening. Any changes, any additions? Very good. So council members, you did receive the agenda ahead of time. There's no changes or revisions until they came to motion to adopt the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Ball makes the motion. Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Now, our consent agenda.
On tonight's consent agenda is Resolution 2025-006, the financial statements for six months ended December 31st of 2024, approval of agenda briefing minutes for January 2nd of 2025, and lastly, approval of regular meeting minutes from January 9th, 2025.
Ladies and gentlemen, our consent agenda, our items that routinely come before the council, like our financials and our minutes, we generally take them as a group to approve them for efficiency. Council, what's your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Ball makes the motion. Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Alrighty, um, we are pleased tonight to have John Burgess from the Forsyth County Tax Collector and Assessor's Office. Um, he's gonna, we recognize that there's a lot of changes going on with reevaluation, and John was kind enough to come down this evening and present a short presentation about what we should expect and kind of the whens and whys and hows that are going on right now. John, thanks for being with us.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Glad to be here, Mayor, Mayor of the County, the Council, and maybe our community. All right. Well, thanks again for the opportunity to be here. Certainly, we've been a little bit busy the last few weeks, fielding phone calls in our office about the reappraisal, but wanted to give you an update about that, so appreciate your interest in the important topic. Before I talk a little bit about the results of the reappraisal for Lewisville, I wanted to make sure that everybody understands why we even do reappraisals. Besides the fact that they're required to do, be done statutorily at least every eight years, Forsyth County's been doing four-year reappraisals since the mid-1980s, and I do want to mention, there's nothing different that we've done this time than any other reappraisal. It is the exact same process. The laws are the same, the processes are the same, and so it's always about following sales, but I'll get more into that in a minute. But the real reason, the purpose behind a reappraisal is actually about equity or fairness in property tax. Property tax is an ad valorem tax, which means according to value. The theory of fairness there is that the more you own of something, the more you would pay. The less valuable something you own, the less you would pay. All goes to the support of the community needs. And so, what happens is there's four types of property that we tax. One is registered motor vehicles, you know about that, you get those bills every year. Personal property, that can also be like business equipment that companies have. There's something called public service, which are your utilities, railroads and things like that, they pay taxes too. And then the fourth and largest component is real estate. Well, the first three types of property are actually valued every year at 100% of fair market value. Real estate is only appraised once every reappraisal. And so, if you didn't do anything to your house recently, we would have set your previous value in 2021, and we would not change that assessed value until 2025. Okay? So you're paying taxes on that same amount of dollars each year. Well, as you know, the real estate market changes, right? All the time. And so, as you get away from that 2021 appraisal date, our values are less relevant to what's going on in the market. There's been unprecedented changes in the real estate market in Forsyth County and across North Carolina and across the United States over these last four years. And so, essentially, what is unfair is that in 2024, if someone bought a $100,000 piece of machinery, or a $100,000 Corvette, we're gonna be taxing them on the $100,000 worth of that value. But if someone paid $100,000 for a piece of real estate in Forsyth County in 2024, likely, I'm probably only taxing it at about $65,000. So you see the inequity there. And so, the purpose of a reappraisal is simply to bring the real estate values that we have on our books into property alignment, so that in the year of the reappraisal, no matter what type of property you own, everybody's paying their fair share. A $100,000 Corvette pays the same amount as a $100,000 piece of real estate, et cetera. And so, that is the definition of fairness in property tax. So that's the purpose of a reappraisal. It's not to, you know, just because we do a reappraisal and there's more money to tax doesn't mean that someone needs more money to spend. Those are two independent things. So I just wanted to mention that before I started a little bit into that, because a lot of folks, you can tell on the internet, don't really understand why we do reappraisals, so I wanted to mention that. So, I have a graphic here that kind of displays that. With 2024, the situation in '24 on the left, and then our job as assessors is to bring all property types into 100% of fair market value in the year of the reappraisal. You can imagine that we have a lot of statutes that we have to follow. One of the main ones talks about what is, that we must appraise all property at fair market value, as I was describing. And it goes on to say that we know what that is by looking at examples of where people have exchanged money for property. In other words, buyers and sellers. And so, it is what would reasonably exchange hands for. So it's basically what your value is, what your property's worth on January 1st of 2025 is the value that I'm supposed to send you, that you would reasonably get if you were to put your property on the market. Forsyth County has about 160,000 properties. There's about 6,500 properties in Lewisville proper. Of the county properties, all these little green dots on here, those are actually the sales that we use in our database to understand what the real estate market is. Over the last four years, there's been an unprecedented amount of sales over that time period as well. Over 30,600 sales have occurred in Forsyth County in these last four years. And so, the more sales we have, the more data we have, typically, the more accurate we can be as well. These sales are just the sales that occurred in 2024, and you can see a little bit better where Lewisville is there on the map, but you can see there's plenty of sales over four years, and still plenty of sales even in the last year of our reappraisal. Our job is to provide an accurate and fair value for each property. Doesn't matter if it's worth $1,000 or 100 million, we work just as hard on both of those to try to make sure that we have an accurate value on each property. It also is a requirement of us to be fair between like properties. So it's not just good enough to be accurate, but we have to also treat similar properties in a similar way. And that's one of the reasons we have all of our data on the internet. We've had our data on the internet for probably 20 years now. You can look up anybody's property record card, you can see how we're taxing their property, you can look at their tax bills. A lot of that is to help with public information, but a lot of it is about transparency, is to be able to see how we're appraising, to make sure that we are also fair as well. Appraisers follow real estate markets. We don't make them. We're just trying to figure out what the market's telling us, what the market did do. Buyers and sellers create the market. We just try to figure out and analyze the results of their transactions. And so, that's what we use to understand what the local market is, is by analyzing those sales. We also, in our results, have to meet statistical standards, and a lot of folks don't know that. There's three statistical standards we have to meet. I'll talk more about that in a minute, and I won't promise not to bore you about it, but I want you to know they exist. So it's not like we're just making up numbers and throwing them out there and seeing what you think about them, but we have to actually meet statistical standards as well. So, one of the things that is important to understand, and when we're talking about the real estate market, is how to evaluate it. And so, in mass appraisal, we have something called a sales ratio, and really, it's just a way for us to understand how you compare our values that are on the books at the time with a sale price. Okay? The formula's not very complicated. It is the tax value divided by the sale price. And so, let's pretend that in January of '21, we had a property appraised at $100,000, and in 2024, it sold for $155,000. That individual sale creates something called a sales ratio, and that ratio in this case would be 65%. So that's the assessment level of that property. I could also take any groupings of property. I could look at a property in one neighborhood. I could look at all the properties in Lewisville, any way that you want to group properties, and I could find all the sales that occurred in that grouping. I would line up their individual ratios from low to high, and I would take the middle, the median observance, and that is the definition of market level. So, when I say that what the market level is, that's what we're doing. So if I say in all of Lewisville, of all the homes that sold at between $100 and $150,000, I'm looking at all those sales that occurred, lining up their ratios from low to high, and I'm taking the middle one and saying that's the market level. So that's important to kind of understand as I go into my next slide, to show you where we were with our 2021 values, and then where we are now with the 2025 values. So this is specific to the town of Lewisville, and here, I'm looking at 2024 calendar year market sales that have occurred. I only have listed on here residential examples or ranges for residential properties. The reason is, I don't have commercial on here, is there's actually very few sales that occurred of commercial properties in Lewisville. I don't have any recorded in the 2024 calendar year. And I think there was only six in the three years prior to that, so I did not put the statistics out here for these. However, so you can see that the overall level of residential sales for both ones that had houses on them and ones that were just vacant land, the overall assessment level for what sold in the 2024 year compared to our 2021 values, our assessment level was 65%. The lower the number, the better the market has increased. Okay? So, by looking at the residential land sales, you can see that while they did well, they didn't do as well as the overall. And so, we did not need, another way of looking at that is, we don't need to move the land values up as much as we do the improved properties. Okay? So I have different sale price ranges there, and you can kind of see how those went. Certainly, the, actually, the one that did the best were residential properties that were sold for $750,000 and above. Their market value actually increased more than the others since 2021. But don't always see that. Usually, it's not that case, but that's the case here in Lewisville. So this is where we are, looking at 2024 sales, using our '21 old values. Our job is to get to 100% of fair market value, and so, after you look at what we've done with our new appraisals, and we go against now, this is looking at all four years' worth of sales. I now have an assessment level of 100% accuracy on the residentials together. You see, I'm still 2% low on land, but I'm not 33% low on land. We're a little over on the, in Lewisville, on a certain price range, the 150 to 250 price range at 104, that's still within acceptable standards. You see, the other items are at 100, 197. So this is where we were, which is inequitable, and this is where we are, which is either equitable or very near perfect equity. Okay? So that's, again, the purpose of why we do reappraisals.
Could I stop you for just a second?
Sure.
For clarification, you said you're 2% below where you want to be on residential land values and not 33% below? Is that right?
Right. The previous slide of where we were, the market, our old values were, we were at a 77% assessment level. And so, with our, on this slide. So, in looking at the next slide, that is now looking at our new values compared to those same sale prices, and our assessment level's at 98%.
Just, I'm sorry. 77% is .23 to get to 100, right? Not 33.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I misspoke. I apologize.
That's okay. I'm just trying to make sure I'm following.
Well, and if I said the wrong figure, that does not help, so I apologize if I did Probably, I didn't do that kind of math for the rest of the reappraisal.
Okay, alright.
I mentioned that we have statistical standards that we have to meet, and so what we just talked about was the assessment level, which is actually the median level of assessment. The standard is that we have to be between 90% and 110%, and so, our results of being mostly at 100%, and the worst ones, in your case, were 98 and 103, we're well within the 110 to 90% level. The other thing that we have to do is meet coefficient of dispersion, which is basically a goodness-of-fit measure, and it just means that if you're not hitting exactly the value right on the sale price, that if you are off, you want to be off a little bit, not off a lot. And so, if you're underneath these parameters, then that means if you are missing a little, you're missing small amounts. The last one is called the price-related differential, and that one is an equity measure, and it ensures that we do not have progressiveness or regressiveness in our assessments. And in other words, we're not overappraising smaller-value homes relative to larger-value homes, and et cetera. So those are the three statistics that we have to meet. Whether we do that at each market level or in any way that you want to group properties, we have to meet these statistics. This is a heat map for Forsyth County, and this shows a, the, trying to describe now the change in market value as looking through the lens of the tax values. So if I compared the 2021 assessed values to the 2025 assessed values, you get a map that looks like this. The color ranges on the left are the typical color ranges that I use. However, the amount of increases that they represent is branded, because the amount of change has been historic over the last four years. Typically, the red color would represent properties that have gone up 50% or more in value, and for those of you that can read that, the red is for 300% increases and above. There are still properties in the county that have decreased in value actually over the last four years. There's very few of them, but they do exist. In this case, white is actually a color. It's not a blank or a void, it's actually representing a segment, and that segment is any kind of increase from 1% all the way to 40% increase is in white. That's a very large amount of value range in one color, and that's my first color for value ranges. The next two are gray and green and et cetera, and they go on up. I don't have these broken up evenly, there's a reason for that, but the reality of it is that you can see a lot of, you see in Lewisville, in the southern part, you see more of the white color, in the northern part, you see more of the green color. Green is in the 60 to 100% range over four years. I have a little, I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button. This is the Lewisville City Limits, just with that heat map portion just on display. Heat maps are good to, you know, inform folks of certain things. They can exaggerate some of the responses, so some of the red that you see on there will be where a property might have been a vacant lot in the '21 era, and now there's a house on it, and so that creates, can create obviously a very large percent increase. Another way to talk about how property values have changed in the town of Lewisville over the last four years is, you can see the parcel counts and/or the percentage of properties included in those same value ranges. You see that your largest amount of increase is in that 40 to 60% increase, about 40% of the properties are in that, and the next biggest group, about 35%, are in the 60 to 100% increase in value over four years. There are a limited number of properties that received a value pending on their notice, and so we mailed out the reappraisal notice, and then they opened it up, and it says "Value incomplete." There was only about 5,000 of those across the whole county. It's where people have building permits and things like that, and so we were focused on the reappraisal, we weren't focused on getting every single building permit called up at that moment. So I don't know how many were in Lewisville, but there wouldn't have been many, and, but anyway, I wanted to explain what that was. Whenever we get those values finalized, we'll mail out the results there, and folks have the right to appeal those as well. You may have even gotten your own notices here at the town hall for fully exempt property and things like that. You may wonder why we send those out. Well, I would anticipate your property to remain non-taxable for a long, long, long time, but there's plenty of other non-taxable property that actually doesn't stay non-taxable. And sometimes churches sell parts of their land, or they do whatever, or school, you know, private schools do this and that. So it's our opportunity to make sure we're showing folks what we have the value on the books for, in case it goes taxable, then we're already providing notice as to what that value is. So, another thing that you learn after reading a lot of comments on social media is, there's a lot of folks that do understand the process, and there's plenty that don't. And so, one of the things that a lot of folks wish we would tell them is the tax rate, the new tax rates. Well, that's not the time for that yet. Our process, our job in all of this process is to appraise the property, and so that's what we do, and we always mail those out sometime around January and February, just like we did this time. And just like always, you folks and the other jurisdictions in the county, they're working to figure out their budget needs for next year, and you'll have those budgets figured out by the end of June, by the statute. And so, none of us know the tax rates for the county or the municipalities, and so some people are looking at the amount of increase and kind of saying, "Well, I know the old tax rate, I know this new value, was my tax bill gonna correspondingly go up?" The answer should be no. No, your tax bill would not go up that much, but until everybody sets their rates, you don't know, you don't know the end result until you know. One of the things that the legislature did years ago in North Carolina was, they put a law in that said anytime a reappraisal is conducted in a county, the taxing jurisdictions have to also publish in that year their revenue-neutral tax rate. And that rate is meant for transparency purposes. And I mentioned at the beginning that just because we do a reappraisal, and if that means there's more money to tax, that doesn't always mean you need to have more money received, right? And so, what the revenue-neutral tax rate does is it says, well, what were your revenue needs the year before the reappraisal? It also says, what has your last three years' average growth rate been? Because you have growth that's reasonable. And so, if we gave you last year's amount of money, and we gave you the three-year average increase in how your budget grows anyway, and then you look at that amount of money need divided by now, what is a much larger tax base, in this case, a very much larger tax base, what would the, what would the tax rate be? That's the definition of revenue-neutral. So revenue-neutral is not anything that limits you at all in what you decide to do, but it is, it is meant for transparency, and so I think it's good to always point that out, because it is something you have to do, and it lets the public kind of understand what's going on behind the scenes. We've already sent out reappraisal notices. We have informal appeal forms are included inside the reappraisal notice. Residential properties also received a property record card, that was the first time we'd done that. That was something the county commissioners wanted us to do. Because of the historic changes in value, they said, "Well, we want to make sure people know more and more how you did what you did," so send out a record card to them. And so, you do, so if you got your value and you believe that it's fair and it's reasonable, well, that's great. Phase one's done. The only thing we got left to do is when everybody figures out their tax rates, we'll be able to put that together on a bill in July. If you feel like your value is not fair or not reasonable, then appeal. There's two ways that you can appeal. Inside that form was also your informal appeal form. That appeal comes back to me, comes back to our office. Our appraisers will consider what you're saying, will look at your property again, and give you a result. The second way that you can appeal is you can bypass that, and you can go on to a formal appeal, which is to the Board of Equalization Review. They are independent of our office, they are appointed by the county commissioners, and they have complete oversight over the tax office. So I typically would recommend to someone, "Well, go ahead and file an informal appeal, let's see what, let's see what happens," right? And if you get satisfaction out of that, great. If you don't, then hop in line by the last business day in June, file your formal appeal, and you can go before the board." That would be my recommendation, but people can do whatever they want to. But just want you to know that appeals are a part of the process. You know, I've not been inside anybody's home in this entire room, or hardly anybody else is in the whole county. There's all kinds of things about the interior of homes that we do not know. Don't know the condition always, don't know that your basement's leaking, don't know that you maybe fixed everything up also. So typically, if we're off, it's usually about us not knowing about something about the interior condition or an interior item that we couldn't see, is typically what it is. But regardless, if you think your value's right, that's great. If you think your value's wrong, then we encourage you to appeal. Okay? And we're there every day. My day tomorrow's at the front counter, I'll be there helping folks fill out appeal forms and things. I will tell you that I was really, I knew what was coming as far as the value changes, and I was real, I've been surprised at really the lack of the volume of phone calls or appeals that we've received so far. So we still have received plenty of phone calls, but it's nothing like I was expecting. County-wide, right now, we've got about 1,200 or 1,300 appeals that we've received. We're halfway, we're almost halfway through the month-long period to file those. That's not on pace for anything normal. That's less than normal. We'll typically run about 4,000 to 5,000 informal appeals county-wide in a reappraisal. So I don't know what'll happen. Maybe everybody's just holding on to them and giving them to me at the end, I don't know. But so far, it's been a little more quiet than we were anticipating, so, anyway. Don't know what, don't know what all that means, but we'll find out as we go along. Hope this has been helpful to you. I wanted to also mention that we have, if you're wondering about the sales that we use, they're, all of them are available on something called Forsyth Sales. You can go to our website and see that. Tax parcel viewer's been out there for years, it shows you everybody's property record cards and things like that. We have a new item this year called Tax Property Portal, and it does essentially the same thing as Tax Parcel Viewer, however, it's easier to navigate. I think it, I think it just looks better, but the biggest advantage is it works on your mobile devices. Tax Parcel Viewer, I don't think it worked at all on mobile devices. Tax Property Portal does. And so- And so all of that's available on our website, and so you can click on there, and from there you can get to see your bill, you can go file an appeal form, you can also, on the far right, you can see the sales that we were using in your market area, you can see the area sales also that we use to value your property. So if you have any questions, we're there every day answering the phone and helping folks with exemptions and filling out appeal forms, but anyway, hope that was helpful to you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Council members, questions?
On the slide where you show the percentage increase by, I guess, category of value, forty percent, you said, was the highest group, the largest group? So from forty percent and above, what percentage would, of all the folks who have property in the town, what is the number above forty percent? Because I can't remember what the, oh, there it is. So it looks like seventy-four, seventy, about seventy-five or six percent of the folks, that's rough, I didn't add it all up, but about seventy-six percent got an increase in value above forty percent, is that what that means?
That's correct.
Okay.
John, you may have said this in the presentation, how many properties did you actually look at in Lewisville?
Lewisville has about sixty-five hundred real estate parcels.
Okay, and those were all calculated into the, trying to come up with a fair market value, or, yeah, fair market value?
Yes, I think what you're maybe getting at is the sales that we analyzed in Lewisville, and so over a four-year period, there was thirteen hundred and four sales in all of Lewisville over the four years. In the last year, there was two-hundred and seventy sales. And so those are typically, we really try, I mentioned the word "market area," we have the county broken down into fourteen or fifteen hundred market areas, and they're really just smaller groups of geography of similar-type properties. They may have anywhere, they mostly have about two-hundred properties in them. And so we're trying to stay inside those little groups and see what properties are selling for, and then learn from that and appraise in those areas. But, you know, the big key to any appraisal is you find the best comp you can, right, and learn from that to appraise the subject property. But we're typically, you know, out of the sixty-five hundred properties in Lewisville, thirteen hundred of them sold over the four-year period, which is, that's a good percentage.
So the axiom is, if you have the poorest house in the richest neighborhood, you're going to have the biggest increase?
Probably so.
Council members?
Yeah, just a, just a quick comment, thank you for your time this evening. Does your office have any social media posts or education pieces that can work with our communications, or have we already pushed that kind of stuff out?
They posted one today.
Okay.
Forsyth County posted one today that we can share.
We, I have, I was doing, before the reappraisal notices went out, I went to all the libraries and all that, and the folks that endured that hour-and-a-half presentation, they got gold stars for that. But that presentation, I've got on our website, and I have written out the explanation to the slides. So it goes into more detail about the process and things like that, and so that's available on our website as well. You can go to the tax office webpage, and it's under General Info, 2025 Reappraisal, and there's three tabs right there at the top, and one's that big presentation, the other's the Schedule of Values, and the other's the FAQ section. So those are usually pretty helpful, yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Burgess, for being here and helping explain all this, especially to all of us. I had a question, do you keep, is there a record kept when these evaluations are made, and then how much, say, a home actually sells for? It seems like normally it doesn't sell for as much as the property tax value.
Well, we keep up with all the ownership in the county primarily so we can send you the tax bill for it, but we're looking at every transaction, the registered deeds, and the clerk of court's office to make sure we have accurate ownership. From there, we are gleaning those sales that are occurring in the real estate market. There are, all those transactions are either considered qualified sales that we use in our analysis, or they are not qualified sales, and we do not use them in our analysis. So we do not, we go by, we do go by Department of Revenue standards on how we qualify sales, but examples of sales we would not use would be transactions between related parties, family members, auction sales, governmental unit sales, financial institution sales, foreclosure sales, we don't use any of those type transactions. And so if we didn't disqualify it, then that means it's therefore a qualified sale, and those are the thirteen hundred sales that we use in our database to help us learn the market, to appraise the other sixty-five hundred properties in Lewisville. We're not using sales of property in Turnersville to appraise in Lewisville, we're using sales in Lewisville to appraise Lewisville. If I even came close to answering your question, I'm not sure.
It could be my fault. Now, I'm thinking, for example, I want to sell my home, and it's been valued, say, two-hundred and fifty thousand, but I can only get a buyer at a hundred and seventy-five. Do you keep records like that, and then consequently think we really overvalued that property?
Oh, okay. There's, when I was talking about the assessment levels, there's always sales above that and below that. And so there, even when I'm at perfect market level, I'm going to be a little low on some homes and a little high on others. And that's the way medians work, you can't have a median of one unless you have something above and something below that. So our value's not always going to hit exactly on perfectly market value, but again, because some of the reasons are, we don't know what your home's really, really, really like on the inside and things like that. If, again, if you feel like your value is incorrect, I mean, we want you to appeal, we don't want to overtax anybody, and so if I sent you something that said your home's worth four hundred thousand, and you think it's worth three hundred thousand, then you should appeal.
Is there any appeal if you can't sell it for the amount that it was appraised for?
There's a variety of reasons you could use to back up your case, but typically, I mean, the current real estate market right now is homes don't stay on the market more than thirty, forty-five days typically. So if you've got a home out there for, you know, six months on the market or something like that, that's a, you know, twenty years ago, that wouldn't raise your eyebrow. Now, that's like, well, it was a long time that's on the market, and so that's usually an indicator that something's going on, either it's something about the property or something, maybe something we don't know about it as well.
Helpful, thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate you taking time to come out and be with us tonight.
Sure, thank you.
State, I'm sure Veronica can put a link to the Forsyth County page up on our Facebook page?
Absolutely, and we can share what the county shared today as well, so we can get that accomplished tomorrow.
That'd be great, perfect. Thank you. All righty, PJ, you have an introduction for us.
Let me go over these stats real quick, and then I'll bring our new deputy up. I've got a couple of things I want to share with you for January. Six hundred and seventy total calls for service, three hundred and sixty-four security checks, eighteen traffic arrests, the alarms, that's going to be a typo there, it's not six hundred and seventy, so I'll have to get that corrected, and still about a six-and-a-half-minute response time, so not a lot to report, luckily. I did want to share, if the councilor member, through the course of about two years, we put the AEDs for the use of CPR in every deputy's car. I think we are the only township within, in the county. Clemens had some several years ago, but we've updated all, so every deputy in Lewisville has a AED as of July of last year. And I just wanted to share with you, the Deputy Tomlinson was at a call for service this past Saturday night here at a residence in Lewisville, and the elderly gentleman went into actually cardiac arrest. The quick response from the deputies getting the AED out of the car, he actually had to deliver a shock, and the man left with a pulse, and is currently still in the hospital. So it is a testimony. Sometimes we don't get to see these resources that you approve for us in the event of emergency, and I wanted to share that with you, because it is a testimony. You can't really put a price tag on somebody's life when it's your loved one or somebody that you love and care about, so we generally are, we're grateful and we appreciate your support in allowing us to be equipped with that. The fire department reached out to me early Sunday morning to tell me about it, and they were appreciative of it as well, so it does help not only the deputies in that situation. So, I mean, we're pretty fortunate, because Lewisville Fire Department is manned for the most part, and they have, you know, very quick response time, but, you know, those matter of minutes, it's crucial when it comes to delivering CPR, so. With that being said, we do have a new deputy, Deputy Caleb Gray, if he'll step up here. He's no stranger to law enforcement, he worked with the city of Winston previously, he's been with the sheriff's office for about six years, he's, he come over, we stole him from the township next door, got him over to Lewisville, so, it's kind of like baseball, we trade, you know, team trade, so. He's a member of the Crisis Negotiator Team here at the sheriff's office, he come over in Lewisville in January, he is the permanent night shift car, so, you know, God bless him for wanting to work night shift all the time, I'm glad somebody wants to do it, but he has a wealth of knowledge, he's a valuable asset, and he'll bring a lot to our team, we're very fortunate to have him, so please welcome Deputy Caleb Gray.
Welcome, Caleb. I applaud, it's hard for me to. Caleb, welcome over to where the grass is greener.
Well, thank you.
Everything's nicer, the sky's bluer in Lewisville.
Well, at night, it's.
It doesn't matter.
No, I'm happy to be here, I'll be around, if you guys need anything, y'all know how to get ahold of me.
Very good. We never do anything for you, please let us know. Welcome, welcome.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Right, ladies and gentlemen, we are at our first public forum, there'll be really four opportunities tonight for you to speak. There'll be two public hearings that will hold later on, but the first one is a public forum that you can come forward, address the council on any issue that you feel important, that's near and dear to your heart, and you want to share with us. Is there anybody who would like to speak to the council? No bodies are moving, okay, very good. I do remind you, there are written forms in the back of the room, if you'd like to fill out a written form, give it to our clerk, and it can be part of our record of this meeting. Lynn, you have our first public hearing.
We're trying the mic here this evening, and I think this is a little bit better. We have two zoning requests this evening, let me get to my slide set here, I can pull those up. Ah, okay, that looks right. We have a request from Mrs. Hutchins to rezone the property that she owns at seventy-five oh five Franklin Road. The total property acreage is a little over one and a half acres, there was a point-five and eight, point-five-nine acre portion of that parcel that in nineteen ninety-seven was zoned for conditional pedestrian business, essentially for a single use, storage and care and maintenance of lawn care equipment. That use has since ceased, and Mrs. Hutchins would like to change the zoning back to residential single-family RS twenty, which is the predominant zoning in the area. For the record, the tax pin is five eight eight six one four four one two three, this is a general use rezoning. The planning board voted unanimously at its December meeting to recommend approval of this. This is a simplified tax map for you, it shows how the center of the parcel was sort of zoned for this conditional pedestrian business that was described, while the remainder of the parcel remained zoned RS twenty, and those around it remained zoned RS twenty. I included a brief contemporary aerial shot that I just took from the current GIS this I won't read the staff report to you, because that will put you to sleep, but on balance, in reviewing all the relevant factors that pertain to a rezoning request, and including consistency with the land use plan, reasonableness with zoning patterns in the area, uses in the nearby area, the uses in the proposed zoning district, planning staff felt very confident recommending approval of this rezoning based on those consistency and reasonableness determinations that are noted in the staff packet, staff report packet. One thing that I would call your attention to, that's just a summary of what I just said, that this place, this parcel is located in the Lewisville Neighborhood Residential Place Type that's identified in the Lewisville Comprehensive Plan, which is essentially those areas of town that have grown over the last twenty years in a suburban-style, single-family home fashion, neighborhoods that were identified in the comp plan as ones that we want to preserve and enhance over the next ten to twenty years. And single-family residential uses are identified as a key component of this place type. In this case, there was only really a single use approved in the current zoning district, which was the storage of the equipment, and going to RS twenty just basically means that we have to take a look at all of the potential uses in RS twenty to say, "Yeah, they're compatible, and we feel like those are good," and staff does, when you take into account all the relevant factors. Something new you'll see in your packet this evening, just for the council members, is one of those use lists for RS twenty that says these are all the things that you can do in RS twenty, either by right with a permit, or special use permit, or by this means or another means. You'll also see a consistency and reasonableness determination that was taken verbatim from what was presented in the staff report, along with a motion statement, which includes both a draft motion to approve and a draft motion to deny. The goal of all of this is to streamline considerations of consistency and reasonableness for rezoning applications, and to make the process a bit clearer for everyone. I did learn that, I think in the future, the form is going to say "I move" as opposed to "I motion," so future, you'll be seeing that word instead. So that's our first case, and if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer what I can.
Any questions for Lynn? Lynn, as I understand it, this was a request by the current property owner?
It was, the current property owner requested this, yes. Technically, I should make a note about that, many of you have heard pieces and parts, there's still a lot up in the air about downzoning in the North Carolina Legislature. Jurisdictions right now have to be very careful about enacting any sort of new rule or zoning a piece of property in a way that may look like a quote-unquote "downzoning" in the eyes of the current statutory language, unless it is agreed to by the property owner, that is the explicit requirement. This was asked for and agreed to by the property owner, as was our second case this evening, so we're in good shape on both of those.
Very good. Council members, any questions? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in support of or in opposition to this petition? Anybody at all? All righty, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I motion to approve this request based upon the consistency and reasonable determinations statements that are included in the board agenda packet and as may be amended. Second. Thank you.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion, well read. Ms. Walsh makes the second, well thought. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Lynn, you also have our next one.
Good job. I do, I'm going to do this, so I don't have to lean quite so far. Our next one is, of course, numerically, L one twelve. Coincidentally, both of these properties, well, both of these requests are located on Franklin Road. The first one was at seven-five oh five, the second one is at seventy thirty-five, it's closer to the Lewisville-Viana intersection. This is a request to rezone a little over seven acres of land from a mix of residential single-family and general industrial to institutional and public uses. This is the site of Temple Baptist Church. The zoning that is in place... The zoning that is in place has been there for some years. There are historical uses that are now no longer in use on portions of the property that the church has recently acquired. This request on the part of the church is to clean up zoning, clean up possibilities for institutional church uses in the future, should that come along. The planning board reviewed this at its December 14th, 2024 meeting, and voted unanimously to recommend approval. This is a quick zoning map, and also included an aerial map. It gives you a slightly better idea of why this is a little confusing. So, the yellow highlighted parcel is the largest of the current parcels that the church owns. The second one, which is immediately to the east, where the parking area is, is also owned by the church. The three that they just acquired are those outlined in red, with the, have the GI symbol, the general industrial symbol, where there was, I've been told, a few different uses in the past that were sometimes not the most likely neighborhood uses, and that's fine. So, they're not there anymore. The church has acquired these for future plans, and would simply like to cover the bases when they're thinking about their long-range goals. Very similarly to the last case, the Comprehensive Plan indicates that this is located in the neighborhood place type also, and like single-family residential uses, neighborhood-scale institutional uses are identified as crucial components of the neighborhood place type. Our staff has reviewed this as thoroughly as we do all of our applications. We find that, given all the consistency considerations, the considerations of reasonableness, that this is a good fit, that there was no reason to recommend anything but approval for this request. And there are representatives here from the church tonight, if the council members have questions, but I'll be glad to answer any questions also.
Any questions for Lynn?
I do have one, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I know you mentioned in the last case about possible downzoning. I know that we're covered in this because the owner of the property is coming forward, but just from my knowledge, general, I don't want to say the wrong thing, general institutional to industrial, not industrial, institutional, is that considered a downzone or a?
There's a couple qualifiers. It's a good question. It's a very good question. There are a couple of qualifiers. One way of looking at downzoning is, how many, just the sheer number, of uses are allowed in District A, and how many are allowed in B? If it's less, it might be a downzoning. What is the substantive nature of and intensity of the uses allowed in one district or another? If you're lightening those up, is it a downzoning? It might. And it can even include things like parking, what landscape buffer requirements are and things like that. So, in this case, looking at just sheer numbers, let's say, for comparison, when you add up what's allowed in RS-20 on those two parcels, and when you add up what's allowed in general industrial, it adds up to more than is allowed in IP district, institution, public. But again, we're covered because we have a, I hope they give you a little bit of understanding on it. It's a complex topic that's vexing planners across the state right now. Just making sure we want to follow the rules. But, yeah, they're here tonight, and then, like I said, any additional questions, I'll be happy to answer.
And for the record, this is a request from the property owner.
It is. And for the record, if it had not mentioned it before, and I like to do this, Stacy and I've discussed this, just so that if we ever look back at the video, we know what we're talking about, the principal tax parcel ID for this property is 5886-530107, plus the four adjacent parcels that were mentioned.
Very good. Any questions?
A question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Just out for information, please, Lynn. It has that environmental feature of the property is located within the Yakkin River WS4 watershed.
Oh, yeah.
Are there extra restrictions on that, or how does that come into play with the piece of property?
I'll be happy to explain that. About two-thirds of Lewisville is located, maybe not quite two-thirds, a good portion of Lewisville is located in the Yakkin River drinking water watershed, which is a protected or regulated drinking water watershed. It does mean that there are some minimum standards that must be adhered to for density and for different types of uses. The remainder of Lewisville is not in that watershed. In this case, for church and church-related uses, it would mean that they're subject to one of two tiers of density, that, well, one of three really, what we call low-density development, would be either 24% with curb and gutter, or 36% without curb and gutter of total impervious surface area. That includes structures, paved areas, anything that's impermeable. The high-density option allows up to 70% impermeable surfaces with storm water management control devices, which is Mr. John Hannah's specialty. And in the watershed, it does mean that there are often extra steps and measures that need to be taken for both erosion control and storm water management.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, counsel? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak in support of or in opposition to the petition or request? I see no one coming forward, therefore, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
A motion to approve this request based upon the consistency and reasonable determination statements that are included in the Board Agenda Packet, as may be amended.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion by Mr. Long, a second by Mr. Huffman. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Thank you, Lynn, for those presentations. Dora, you have our first item of new business.
Before counsel is ordinance 2025-004. This is the final step to amend the Lewisville Town Charter to implement four-year stagger terms for council members only, contingent upon voter approval during the November 2025 municipal election. The ordinance states that the mayoral seat would remain as two years. It further outlines the implementation process of stagger terms for council members.
Very good. Any questions for Dora?
Yeah, thank you, Dora. Can you just briefly outline what that implementation looks like, just for the record?
Yes, ma'am. So, four-year stagger terms shall be implemented as follows. At the regular municipal election to be held in 2027, candidates for three council seats receiving the highest number of votes shall be elected to serve for four-year terms. The three candidates for council seats who receive the next highest number of votes shall be elected to serve for two-year terms. At the regular municipal election to be held in 2029, and every four years thereafter, three council members will be elected to serve for four-year terms. Then at the regular municipal election to be held in 2031, and every four years thereafter, three council members shall be elected to serve for four-year terms. The mayoral seat will remain a two-year term.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All righty, councilmembers, you have a ordinance before us. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve ordinance 2025-004.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Huffman, a second by Ms. Hunt. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All righty, we have one, two, three, four in the affirmative, and two in opposition.
Okay.
Dora, you have the second item.
Yes, sir. So, with the approval of ordinance 2025-004, council must now pass a resolution calling for a special election for the vote on implementing the four-year stagger terms for council members. Although this vote will be held at the same time as the municipal election in November of 2025, the general statutes refers to it as a special election. The resolution also outlines the wording to be placed on the ballot. Resolution 2025-007 is before you for your consideration.
Counselmembers, any questions?
So, this just gives, provides the opportunity for citizens to weigh in on the ordinance. Is that?
Yes, sir. This just makes it official that it'll be done at a special election.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the intent of the first, the last motion, and also the intent of this motion. Excuse me, to give the public an opportunity to express their views. All righty, counsel, your pleasure on this resolution.
Move to approve resolution 2025-007.
I'll second.
Mr. Huffman makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Pam?
I'll take it, Mayor.
There's no Pam. She's gone.
Pam's apologies. She got a text about a family emergency, so she had to be excused, but, so I'll handle that tonight for Pam. So, before you is ordinance 2025-005, amending budget ordinance 2024-001. You can see provided for you that the information, originally, we start out with a beginning budget in our snow and ice removal for about $75,000. The latest event that we had was a quite sizable one. You can see that we do a contractor's training day for approximately $8,000. And then, the snow event in January was $39,550 for our contractor to do the snow and ice removal. So, remaining currently in that budget is $27,450. In the event, which it could very well be possible that we have another snow and ice event, such as we did in January, there would not be enough to cover a contract for snow and ice removal once again. So, we're asking for a budget amendment in order to bump that up, a total of $47,550, to put that line item back to the $75,000 that we normally have in that area.
Any questions? Stacy? Entertaining motion, counsel?
Motion to, motion to approve the, where are we, ordinance for, ordinance 2025-005.
Second.
Thank you.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Dora, you're back again.
Yes, sir. So, resolution 2025-008 is before council revises the Special Projects Review Committee's purview, including the review of facility use exemption request in addition to the nonprofit project requests they currently receive. The facility use exemption request and nonprofit funding request applications have been consolidated into one document to make the process easier. So, we are recommending this on behalf of the Special Projects Review Committee.
Any questions for Dora?
I just want to comment, Dora, as chair of that committee, I wanted to thank you for such a good job on joining those together.
Thank you.
What's your pleasure, counsel?
Move for adoption?
Second.
Ms. Walsh makes the motion. Mr. Huffman makes the second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Administrative reports, Stacy, I believe you're up.
We've got one more item, Mayor.
Okay, let's go, let's do E, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Dora, you get to go again. Thank you.
You're, Dora. You're welcome. With the adoption of the Special Projects Review Committee accepting the facility use exemption request, we now need to amend Chapter 16 reflecting that. So, ordinance 2025-005, before you reflex that.
Any questions for Dora? If not, will we take a motion, please?
Move for exempt, for approval.
Second.
Ms. Walsh makes the motion. Mr. Huffman makes the second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Now, administrative reports.
So, we don't necessarily have anything coming up between now and our next regular meeting in March, but there are two different items that I wanted just to speak about quickly. So, we will be having a ceremony taking place on March the 22nd from 9:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. at Jack Warren Park. This will be the dedication of the new amphitheater to Mayor Mike Horn, along with the ribbon cutting of our new improvements that we have just completed or are nearing, very close to nearing completion at the park, thanks to the North Carolina State Parks and Trust Fund grant that we received. Secondly, folks can be on the lookout. We are gearing up for our town survey. We generally do this every five or so years, so it's time again to be doing that. Both of these items, there will be articles about them in our upcoming newsletter that will hit doorsteps at the beginning of March, but you can always find out more about these things on our website come March, so we're excited.
Any questions? And you have our approvals of briefing.
Yes, sir. So, at our most recent agenda briefing, we had council approve the proposed Mary Alice Warren Community Center mural, and they also approved the proposed Shalford Square art to be, both pieces of art to be placed at two town facilities.
Ladies and gentlemen, we do occasionally have an opportunity to take action at our briefing session, which occurs the first Thursday of every month. We like to report out those actions at our regular council meeting so that it's part of our record tonight, but it's also available so folks know we took some action. We did something on Thursday. All righty, very good. We are at the second opportunity for folks to speak. Anybody wish to come forward? It's our public comments section. Nobody's coming forward? Well, thank you very much. Again, we will remind you, there are forms in the back, should you wish to make written comments. And those of you watching at home, if you'd like to send a comment, please send it to townclerk@lewisvilleency.net, and we'll make it part of the record of tonight's meeting. Councilmembers, any final thoughts this evening?
Mayor, I do.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make notice, we mentioned earlier after the Forsyth County Tax Assessor's presentation, that information will be posted on the town website. Is there any way we could also make sure that is an accessible version in black and white?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else, councilmembers?
Mr. Burgess, I have a quick question, and you can provide an answer later if it's not available now. What was the 2021 increase? Looks like about, as we mentioned earlier, about 80% of the residents are going to get an increase above 40%. What was that like in 2021? Do you know?
Thank you for your question. I don't tonight know that answer, but I can certainly get that to you. It may also be on the internet, on the old PowerPoint that I have for the whole county. But it was somewhere in that 15% to 25% range was the typical overall.
All right, thanks.
Anything else, counsel? If not, will we take a motion to adjourn this evening? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Long makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're adjourned. Thank you for watching at home tonight, and thank you, folks, for being with us tonight here in the council chambers.